All right, good morning. We are going to start on time. Welcome. I think Counselor Chair is going to join us a little bit later. I'll fill in. In the meantime, and I used to drive my staff crazy as a judge because I always started exactly on time, which no other trial department ever did. And staff wasn't used to that until I was there for a few years. Anyway, we're going to, we have a lot of business to go through. We'll start with a public comment, which is on agenda items only. Is there anyone in the room or online?
Yeah, we don't, we only do public comment on agenda items for council time. We don't do that for work sessions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong phone. First mess up. All right, well, let's start on the work session.
I can introduce. I feel like I'm a little loud, if you want to turn me down. So I'll introduce the fire chiefs that are joining this morning to provide some information on fire impact fees. We do have Fire Chief John Noor from Clark Calis, Fire Chief Kristen Mauer, did I say that right, of Fire District Six, Fire Chief Scott Sorensen, Fire District Three, and Fire Chief Brennan Blue from Fire District Five. So if you all want to come up and start the presentation, that would be great.
Thanks for coming on time. I know many of you came very early. As I walked in, you were also walking in. I appreciate that. So please introduce yourselves to the counselors as well.
Is it live already? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, John.
Brendan pointed at me, so.
Oh, sorry.
I'm John Noor, I'm the Fire Chief, Clark Calis Fire Rescue. We serve the cities of Ridgefield, the center, Woodland, the Calis Indian Reservation, and about 120 square miles of unincorporated Northwest Clark County.
Good morning. Ooh, excuse me. Good morning, I'm Brennan Blue, Fire Chief for the city of Vancouver in Fire District Five. Fire District Five serves about 94,000 people in the unincorporated part of the county.
My name's Kristen Mauer. I'm the Fire Chief for Clark County Fire District Six. We serve 37 square miles in the county, about 75,000 citizens, the neighborhoods of the Fairgrounds, Palida, Salmon Creek, Mount Vista, and Hazel Dell.
Good morning, I'm Scott Sorensen. I'm with Fire District Three. We serve the area of Rush Prairie, Hawkinson, Battleground, 45,000 people, about 90 square miles. That's our area, east side of the county. So the problem and the reason we're here is that with the way the funding mechanism occurs in the state of Washington or is in place, it kind of limits us to being able to afford operational expenses only. It maxes out at $1.50, and the increase that we're allowed per RCW is 1% a year unless we go to vote to increase that amount. And that 1% is 1%, as you know, a budget increase from year to year. So it simply does not allow for us to consider capital within that funding mechanism unless we don't spend on staffing and services related to the needs of the district. In my district, we're pretty well maximized at what the public can actually afford on services because of the fact that it's a residential area, rural residential area, and has limited tax base in the first place. So this RCW, the impact fees, allows us to impose fees on new construction that's proportionate to what we anticipate as the call volume increase is going to be based on the population. In our case, with the fees that we currently have in the city Battleground, represents about 5% of the total impact fee available, including schools, parks, roads. So it's a minimal amount. So that's what we want to talk about. Thank you for having us here today, and we'll go ahead on it. So as I mentioned, call volume is our problem. That increases our costs for services. That's based on the population growth over the years, and you can see some numbers here. We all know the population is increasing. The public sees it, and I have to say there's, in our case, my board has directed me to work on this because of the fact that the community is concerned about this growth and how to pay for it. These people, many of them have been there a long time, they've already paid their dues, they've built the capital, they've built the fire stations, they've built the, they purchased the equipment, and it's hard to keep up because the volume, the call for service is increasing. So that's the reason that we are here, to seek, you know, some relief for that growth. And as you can see, the call volumes are going up. These are examples, it's true, across the county. Because of the increase in volume, that also increases our response time. That's typically due to the fact that we are out more often, and depending on, also, where the growth is located, it may not be strategic to where our fire stations are, so it takes us longer to get to areas of new growth. So two things, population raises the call volume, and we're doubling, tripling calls more often, and a lot of the growth, or some of the growth is in areas that aren't, and I have the locations for where we currently have our fire stations. Okay, next. So as I mentioned, the revenue doesn't keep up with the demand, especially when it comes to the capital needs that we have. We've experienced growth and needs for new apparatus facilities, and then I mentioned the 1% limitation, we have that factor, we have to go to vote to keep up with operational needs. And then inflation's also impacted us, especially here in the recent few years. What we try to avoid is voter fatigue. So for Fire District Three, we ran a levy in 2016, and it failed. In 2017, we ran it again, and it passed. And now we have to run again this year to keep up with the growth that's occurred. So we're running, running in August. As far as a bond measure, we ran a bond measure in 1993. As you know, that's a 60%. Our levies are 50% plus one. Those have passed around the neighborhood of 54 or 55%. So my point with that is that we do wear out the voters if we go too much in the work area that I work. It's a little harder to pass these, a little different base, and it's limited valuation, so the revenue is lower based on what's available to us. And the citizen, the citizen has a max too, so we're always considerate of that. So the growth, how this works is we anticipate our 20-year growth projections, and then as related to that, the call volume that will come with it. And so that call volume, we attribute to the, we tie it to the growth. So the impact fee is actually a portion of what the new growth is. So it applies, there's a, there's a long, difficult spreadsheet on how to do that, but you've probably seen our capital facilities plan, it lines it out there, and we think that in this case, the fees are actually fairly minimal. So, but it, but it is directly attributed to the proportion of calls that will be resulting from that new growth, and that's per RCW. Any questions? Am I on track here? Good? So these, these are some samples. This is what we currently have in our capital facilities plan. And again, it's based on that growth. So for a single-family residence, it's 696 per home. Multi-family is 327 per unit, and commercial or non-residential facilities would be 85 cents a square foot. And this would be per this capital facilities plan, per agency that would collect the fees. So it's based on what growth it looks like in your specific area. So Fire District Six's may look a little different than Three's, and same with Five, and, you know, across the board. But it's based on very specific projections.
Could I ask you a question about that? And we recently went through school impact fees, which are, for GMA counties, have a very, very complex and lengthy formula to come up and calculate those fees that are requested by the school districts. What's behind these numbers? I mean, do you have a similar structure? I'm not sure we ever had a presentation by our community development on this structure.
Well, it starts with population, OFM population estimates, and then we, you know, as you're aware of that, you're working on that now. So we start with that, and then we project the growth to that, and then based on that population growth comes a number of anticipated calls. And so we proportion the number of calls that we've had for each of these type of occupancies based on history, what we're running today. So that's kind of what determines what the proportionate number is, is the calls for service.
And it's going to be a little different in every district, so every dis, you know, the key component of this is that the capital facilities plan kind of is the roadmap for how those fees are determined for each individual district. So it is a very complex formula with lots of numbers and a number of apparatus, and there's a lot of components in that, but, but every fire district has to submit that to the county and have an approved plan, which the county will have the ability to review before you authorize that specific district. Certainly, there's, the first portion of this needs to be the county authorizing the districts to collect these fees, and then the second part of that will come as the individual districts present those capital improvement plans that then get reviewed that determine what, what those rates are going to be in each individual district.
And I know Oliver's in the back of the room too, but maybe Kathleen can, so with, again, I'll just compare it because we just went through this with school impact fees. Once those fees are calculated based on the formulas that are set, they usually get, or at least in that scenario, get reviewed by the planning commission, and then, you know, then it comes to us for approval as to, once it's been kind of filtered, if you will, saying, hey Kay, here's the formula, it looks right, and the fire districts have provided you good impact fees. Do we have a process for that in this area, or is it just for schools?
We do, and I'm going to ask Oliver to come up and talk about the process. So the question is, is it similar to other fees of going through planning commission before it comes to council?
Good morning, counselors and county manager. The answer is yes. It's going to be dependent on the fire district's capital facilities plan, and if the council is so directed, they will prepare their capital facilities plan, identifying deficiencies, if you will, but identifying inventory of their current system, and then from there determining what their needs are, and then using that, there is an existing formula, they will plug all of that into that existing formula. It may, it may have to be adjusted, but it has to be vetted through the planning commission and the public before coming to the council for your own consideration.
Super, thank you. So I'm sorry for interrupting the pace of your presentation, but since I did, are there questions right now by any counselor?
I have a couple of questions. Since you mentioned the population, I'm wondering what level you went with, the high, middle, or low of OFMs projections, or do you know?
Middle.
Okay. And it, just the one thing I would like to mention about, and again, having just seen what the school districts brought forward, some of the school, some of the areas where there's not a lot of growth, and I'm thinking of North Country EMS in particular, I serve on the board, and, you know, they're not experiencing a lot of growth, but as far as capital needs, they still have capital, capital needs, so this, this particular funding mechanism might not help, help them out as far as the capital needs, but, so, there's just that.
Well, I guess my response would be that it, it helps some, and some is important. And this also applies to ambulances. It can apply to fire engines, anything that we need that's, you know, an asset, a capital asset.
But it would vary between the different districts, being on how much growth is occurring at what point.
Yes, but, yeah. Yeah, and whatever their CFP would turn out to be, it could result in similar, I'm sure the numbers are going to be fairly close to what we have, but that helps. I mean, it really does. Every little bit helps.
And it points to a bigger issue with, with funding for fire districts in the unincorporated area. Cities have a lot more ability to be able to generate funds. There's, there's different sales tax revenues and other things that cities can do, but fire districts are very limited in their ability to be able to collect. You, you have, the only options you really have is you run a levy, which we, we kind of discussed the levy fatigue, or you look at impact fees as well. And like Chief Sorensen stated, every little bit helps. We are certainly seeing inflation, and I know that there's inflation in the building industry, but we're seeing significant inflation within the fire service and our needs as well. Fire engines that used to cost $450,000 are now costing $750,000. Safety gear that used to cost $1,500 is now $3,000, and, and it's just, I know we're all seeing the results of inflation, and that, and that is not leaving us out of that mix. And so with our limited ability to try to generate funds, this is another tool in the toolbox for some of us to be able to try to help offset some of the costs based upon the new development that's occurring within our areas.
I can give a couple of real-world examples. In CCFR, a housing development of over 440 homes was authorized by the county at 179th and 50th. That's three miles from our nearest station. And so every call that's generated, you now have additional workload on the fire crew that's supposed to cover that area. They now have to travel quite a bit farther, and there are some time standards. WSRB, the Washington Survey Rating Bureau, which sets, or gives information to insurance companies for them setting their rates. It's a time and distance-based system, so now that we're, those folks are farther away, their fire insurance is higher, but we have additional wear and tear on the, on the rigs to get there, so they're traveling farther at what we call Code Three Response, quick acceleration, quick stops to get there. So we have to replace our apparatus sooner, and they're out of service longer, which means they're not available for other calls in the area. That's just one example. I think Chief Sorensen could talk about the area of 119th Street and 117th Avenue, which has been allowed to have explosive development, which is miles from his closest station. And when that development happens, I don't think the people know when they're moving in there that the fire districts are being stymied on their ability to provide service there because we can't afford to build the stations because the money's not there upfront, we can't afford to buy the apparatus. So this is a mechanism that allows us to start collecting the funds and start building that nest egg that can allow a fire station to be built sooner in that area, and have a response crew there sooner to help provide those levels of service I think people expect when they're moving here.
So we've talked about the, you know, assigning cost to the right place, and because of that, and I, I think this is the main reason my board wanted us to work on this project, was that we are accountable to our existing citizens, and then with that, the new ones that come in, the new businesses and residents that come in, and bring something to the table to contribute what we've been building for a very long time. That is our point here, to get the costs right and get them where they need to be. And, and like Chief Noor said, it doesn't pay for all of our needs, but it helps get us closer to that, and, and that's what we're asking for.
I got a couple of comments on this. Last week, we approved a 17, just, just under $17,000 school impact fee, and it adds up, and it adds up, and it adds up, and we keep lumping the burden of increases of costs on the housing. I'm struggling with this. I want to make sure that you have the resources that you need, but I feel like we need to go to the voters first. And if that, if at any point in time that becomes troublesome, then I would like to look at a different tool. You know, I read your memo that you put in there, and this is, this is something that I would love to share. I mean, I've spoken with some of you on this already, but it mentions that impact fees are fair, and I would say that they are anything but fair. And the reason being is they increase the cost of new housing, and then the cost of existing housing follows suit. It also increases based on how much it costs to build a new house. And the part that is considered very unfair is the fact that if we own our own home, we are essentially buffered from that increase in cost because, first of all, our mortgage stays the same, doesn't go up based on the value of our home going up. And if we're to buy a new home, well, we can afford that increase in cost because we can sell our home at a premium as well. It's the individuals that don't own, that are living in apartments that are renting, that are harmed by this because their rent just goes up following the cost increase of housing. So, and we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars in fees just to build a house. And every dollar of that raises the price of the existing stock, somewhere between zero and that dollar amount that you raise, and I would be willing to bet that it's very close to the actual dollar amount. So I, I struggle with this. I want to make sure that you have the tools, that you need to get the job done right. We really appreciate what you do in our community, but I would like to see it go to the voters first, and if that doesn't work, then I would be supportive of a, of a fee.
Other questions or comments?
I have a comment and some questions. First, Chief Mauer, I want to thank you and your team. We live in your district, and your folks were very helpful. My mother, who's, who was 96, was living with us and fell a couple of times, and they arrived within six minutes, were very kind, very helpful, so I really appreciate that and all that. So it's more than, than fires that, services that you provide. I think with the school districts, you know, because I really, I have heard pretty much across the board that the community wants to see development pay its own way, and there's real cost to development, and we have to really have our eyes open related to that because that ties directly into the services that the community is receiving. And as they feel that those services aren't being provided, often the only outlet they have to voice their concerns is not supporting a local levy or a bond, and that, we've seen, and I think in Ridgefield in particular, we've seen where that has, and Battleground, we've seen where that's happened, that the voters say, I don't like all of this development, services are going down, all I can do is vote, vote against increased levy. So I think that's a real concern. You know, I don't know what the process is to either move this forward. I know we're not voting at a work session, so I really appreciate all the information that you're providing. I'm open to seeing, you know, how the public would react to this proposal.
Michelle, do you have any comment or question?
Um, yeah, I, we, the impact fees for Battleground went up by 68%, Ridgefield went up by 67, and Camas went up by 24% because they repeatedly did not vote for their bonds. Like Counselor Marshall said, there's a lot of development that people don't want in this area, they don't want increased taxes on top of record-setting inflation. Yeah, I think this would need to go to the voters. I don't feel comfortable at all implementing additional impact fees. That's it for me.
Thank you. So let me make a few comments too, and I can't remember the last time you came before us. It was a few years ago, and I think I, maybe Karen Barrowman was here too, and we actually rejected the entreaty to increase these fees. And from my perspective, I just wanted to let you know, I just thought you didn't present it, defend it, justify it at the time. That may have been 2019, I don't really recall the details of it. But this is an area we do not want to skip. You know, if you've got a wildfire brewing, or you have a family member who's in distress every second, is an eternity. And contrary to popular belief, or at least some emails that we get, you know, we are charging huge impact fees, and they are driving up the cost of new structures. But, you know, this is Washington State, this is how it's done. I wish that schools were funded differently, I wish that emergency services were funded differently, and, you know, we have a particular problem in Camas, Wasco Fire District still. It's just, you know, all of this should be regional, especially when it comes to wildfire. And we just had, you know, a brush with that last, late, very late in the season. In fact, Cal Fire pretty much stood down, all their summer employees, and Oregon had to come to our rescue in these counties. We didn't lose a single structure. What a brilliant firefight that was. So, you know, when you're faced with calamity and first, and needing first responders, this is not an area we want to skip. And yes, it is fair to charge new development. It basically is what it is. I wish this Washington State had different funding structures. When it comes to bonds, when it comes to taxes, it is somewhat different. I understand that, but we have to fund this. So where I did not previously support these impact fees, I do strongly support them now. We have rapid growth, and even though there was kind of a false narrative out in the community that we didn't accept the OFM growth targets, we did. We, we were well within their range of low to high, but it was on the higher side, a little bit higher than medium. We are expecting growth. And then one of your slides depicted, and I just heard this at a neighborhood meeting too, you know, there are some people that we want no growth, we want no increase in taxes, we don't want no more neighbors. We're going to have that discussion with rural businesses in a little bit here too. But, you know, we can't close Clark County's borders. The GMA is not to stop growth or slow growth, it is to, as best we can pragmatically plan for growth. And it is here, it is coming. I haven't checked in a few years on what our student population is, but a few years ago, it was like 110,000 kids in Clark County. They all need homes, on top of the shortage of homes that we already have. And that's really, in my mind, the driver of the high cost of rents, the high cost of, of home sales. It's the fact that we are so far It's the fact that we are so far behind in inventory, and that's a national challenge. But we have it amplified here because of the amount of growth in southwest Washington, particularly Clark County, and some areas within Clark County here, just still screaming hot and growing. So I fully support this. I look forward to seeing this process continue, hoping with, once we finally get to the decision point, that you have three councilors that support the impact fees because it is fair to put those fees against new housing starts within the county. Just my opinion. But I, and I appreciated that you, and I'm assuming you went to each counselor one-on-one and more fully explained the rationale behind these slides and then came before us today to further that process. I think the narrative is really important for us to fully understand. So last chance for comments or questions? Yes, sir?
Counselor Medvici, thank you for your words of support. Thank you for recognizing the regional problems we face because we live in small political jurisdictional boxes, but the problems cross the line. So any opportunity we can have to have a regional fix to issues is going to benefit all of the citizens of the county. I would like Counselor Young and Counselor Belka to clarify. They both said refer it to the voters. Are we talking about referring impact fees to the voters?
No, that was my intention. I was looking for a bond measure, something that, you know, for capital facilities.
Could you clarify again, please?
Pardon?
Would you clarify again what you said there?
So this entire discussion is regarding capital facilities. So whatever, whatever we need to go to, to the voters to get approval to fund capital facilities.
Good. If impact fees were a part of that, would you support putting impact fees before the voters?
Sure. If the voters want to take a stance on that, absolutely. I'm happy to involve that in part of the process. Do you have any more questions? I actually had a couple, but...
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, just a couple of questions generated. One is, I know that you mentioned Fire District Three in the past, but since then has had a bond pass?
Our last bond was in 93.
Okay.
And most recently, we had a levy in 17 that passed and a levy in 16 that didn't pass, so we ran it again. And those were, those passed in the 50%, mid-50s, or that did, I should say. We're running another one this year.
Okay.
But the bond's been a while. And speaking for the board, the concern has been is that, like I said, we are already running a levy. We have to put the bond over the top of that. So you add that to the millage that you already are collecting for levies that pay for the operational costs, and that's really the bind that we're in.
Yeah. So, and I would, you have, go ahead, go ahead.
And I just want to add that, once again, we're talking about, when we go for levies and bonds, putting it on the existing taxpayers and existing homeowners. From our perspective, that's not fair, continually putting on the existing homeowners. Those that are moving into the community have to have some stake in the game and pay their share at the beginning to help fund what needs to be funded based upon the impacts that are created by those additional members that we're welcoming into our communities, but still it, that they need to share in that load. And if we go back to a levy and a bond, it's going, putting it back on the voters again who've already been paying all the levies and bonds, and we think that there needs to be a more fair dispersment of how that happens.
And I absolutely agree with that, and I wish there was a way that we could do that in a way that didn't increase the cost of housing throughout. If it didn't, I would be totally on board with this. But, so my second question would be, how, how big of a process is this? Because I'm hearing there's kind of two separate processes. There's our approval to have, basically to have a fire impact fee available as a tool, and then there is each individual fire district coming to us and asking us to approve a fire impact fee. Is that correct, two totally separate, different processes?
It is allowing fire impact fees to be collected, so that's the first part. And then the council adopting our capital facilities plan, so accepting our capital facility.
Yeah, if it was, I'd like to clarify that because if it was a situation where we were just approving the ability as a tool, so it's there in case we have a shortage, you know, in case we can't get a bond measure passed or whatever it is to have that funding, it would be nice to have that ready to go at zero until you came to us and approved, you know, we approved a dollar amount based on the needs and based on the fact that we couldn't get support from, from the voters. I'm bummed that it isn't that way. So we have some more time. I'm willing to look at it some more, but just at some point, we have to stop on the housing costs, and it just keeps getting more and more out of control and keep contributing one little bit at a time, here, there, a little. So thank you, I appreciate you coming again. I appreciate all that you do for your community, and I do want to make sure that you guys are adequately funded, absolutely.
I can give, I can give one quick example of a county that authorized. It was Thurston County. And there's multiple fire districts in Thurston County, but currently, there's only one department that has requested and collects the impact fees. So the other departments have other ways of funding it, but as you mentioned, it's just an opportunity to have a form of funding if we're getting greatly impacted by all the development. So I believe it's basically an ordinance that the county passes, just like any other ordinance and the way the fees are collected. And the RCW does have some exemptions for some low income and some other, there's other specific exemptions in the RCW that allows certain segments to not have to pay that impact fee. But really, the collection is just like the collection of a building permit. It'd be a similar process when you file the permit. Now, the RCW has changed a little bit, which allows collection at the, at the back end as opposed to upfront. So there's some ability for, for developers or whoever's doing the construction to push that to the end when they're, when they're going to actually sell the property. So as far as process-wise, once the ordinance is approved and once the capital facilities plan is approved, it's pretty seamless and standard, straightforward, just like the Fire Marshal's office comes to do an inspection and there's a fee for that, or the building official comes to do the inspection and there's a fee for that. So in some counties and many other parts of the country, fire services is subsidized by the county. The counties fund that. We don't have that ability here in Washington State. So it is a bit of a lift, but not as significant as it could be if it was a requirement under the county charter to fund fire protection throughout the county.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for your statement of support as well. It's nice to hear that. And Ms. Marshall, we're honored to serve your mother and be in your community, so thank you for being part of our community. I wanted to make a couple of points, though. When you talked about impact fees and levies, and Chief Sorenson was talking about District Three, the city of Battleground does collect impact fees, so they get partial impact fees in their funding mechanism, as well as Chief Norah has some of those mechanisms as well. For District Six, we have no city in our area. We're all unincorporated, so we don't collect those impact fees, and we're one of the fastest growing areas in the county. Levies do fail. Bonds do fail. District Six has been really lucky and had community support throughout, but that's not the same story with the other departments sitting up here. The problem with assessed valuation and how our levy system works is as assessed valuation increases, our levy decreases. We just passed a levy, a levy lid lift three years ago. I'm looking at having to do it in the next year, and we're looking at over a 40 cent increase, which is a huge lift to ask our community and the community that's already paid for the facilities that we have in place. And the reason why we need to ask for that lid lift is to increase our apparatus and increase our facilities and all of our capital for the growth. So I think when Chief Blue talks about, we're doing this for the growth that's coming in, and we're trying to keep the fatigue and pressure off of our community members that have supported District Six especially, but all these districts throughout our history. And so we will have to ask for levy lid lifts at a much faster rate than we ever had in the history because of those assessed valuation rises and our inability to collect more than that 1%.
So you had a further comment?
Just a couple more points. One is, Counselor Young, as far as the bond measures go, we will still need to run bonds to afford what we're facing. We, the costs have gone up for us as well, so we can't pay for it with just impact fees. That is proportionate, but what it would do is lessen the amount that the current citizens would have to pay on that bond. So the other thing is, is that with the levy, I talked a lot about operational costs. We do still pay for some capital with levy money when we can, apparatus, maybe remodels, those kind of things. So just a couple of points of clarification for you on the funding and how we use it.
Could I add something to that? So by the schedule that District Three has for impact fees, it was almost $700 per residential home. That puts, if you have a neighborhood of 1,000 people, that puts $700,000 into our budget. We just built a station that cost us $10.2 million. So yes, those impact fees help, but they're not the solution either, so.
This is where the rubber meets the road for, you know, the council making decisions, and they're hard ones. We never want to piss off the greater majority of constituents, but sometimes we have to make hard decisions. And funding is a challenge for these resources that are precious and core to what county services we provide, you know, public safety, first response. And I came last from a community that had wildfires rip through Santa Rosa, California, and evacuated from there. We lost about 25% of our housing stock. Oh, my gosh, once you've experienced that. And last year, I was one of the go-now-evacuate households in the East County. We have to pay for it somehow. And, and again, these are services we do not want to skimp on. And as we get longer response times, you know, then people are going to start suffering, and we'll start losing people. I mean, in the military, we learned that golden hour to evacuate people from the battlefield to get them to primary care, emergency care. We can't let these times slip. We have to keep up. And this is one mechanism that's allowed under the GMA for those counties to have it borne by new development, where I think it's rightly placed under our system of resourcing that we have. The other part I want to mention, and I'm assuming the same rules are in place that we have for schools, I mean, they have, they have to be justified, they have to be used for the purpose to accommodate the growth, and they have to be used within a certain amount of time. So I'm hoping that all those pragmatic business rules are in place. I did not see a timeline, you know, when, when does the capital, your capital plans come before us? You know, what is the sequence of events? Oliver, I see you standing up. Thank you.
Counselors, Oliver, again, the Fire District's capital facilities plan will come to us when we do the general plan update. And that's when we reach out to them to submit their capital facilities plan for us to review. What they are asking the council to consider is ability to collect fire impact fees. If the council votes at some point in the future, not here today, if you allow that, then there will be submitting their capital facilities plan with the associated fire impact fees for the public and the council to consider through the planning commission and council process. But we do review their capital facilities plan during the general plan update as other utilities.
Any additional questions by any counselor?
I just have a comment.
I have a question. I think this was mentioned during, sorry, I lost connectivity there for a second. I think this was mentioned during my meeting a couple of months ago with the fire chiefs, and we're discussing this in the office. How many counties within Washington State collect impact fees like this? Because I think it was explained to me, not, not many do within Washington State.
So Thurston County is the only county currently collecting impact fees, but many, many jurisdictions, many cities throughout the state of Washington do collect impact fees. As noted, a couple here within Clark County, Camas, Waschuggal, Battleground, I believe Ridgefield is not collecting as of yet. Not currently, no. But up in the Puget Sound, a majority of those cities are collecting impact fees, fire impact fees. We, we collect fire impact fees in the city of Woodland within our jurisdiction. And I've been in discussion with Steve Stewart at Ridgefield about impact, fire impact fees within the city of Ridgefield.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. Initially, you said only Thurston County is doing it, but then separate areas? I'm confused by that, sorry.
Yes, Thurston County is the only county that we're aware of that connects, collects fire impact fees.
Okay, thank you.
I have another comment. I think one thing unique, well, maybe not unique, there may be a couple of counties in the state that have really a huge urban unincorporated area, so I think that's a significant issue. And then I just want to thank you all for coming forward, taking the time to really meet with us individually and present all of this information. It's really important for us to understand what the needs are in the community and to address them as best we can, so really appreciate that.
And my thanks as well. Thank you. We need to continue the conversation, and we look forward to thoroughly dicing through these issues, and hopefully we'll come up with the right solution. I think one thing that would be helpful during the discussion is knowing all the funding structural changes or differences. I mean, even with school districts among the GMA counties, there are different mechanisms that they fund their school districts. I mean, there's a lot of variety in the counties. So in those counties that don't have impact fees, it would be interesting to know the urban rural split and how they are resourcing their capital needs within the fire districts. So I think that would be a component of further discussion. In any case, last call? Anything else? Oliver, any last comments? Okay, thank you again for this presentation. Did we wish to have a five-minute break before we get into council time and dive right in?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.